Call the roll.
Number Callahan present.
Amendment Barry present.
Number me present. We are waiting for a couple of other members, so we're going to jump around on the agenda. The first item I'm going to take is under the business meeting, and that's new business, the review of proposed Amendment Four to the Quincy Center Urban Revitalization District Plan, be filed pursuant to the laws chapter 121b, section 48. Rob?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Board members. Thank you for having me. My name is Rob Stevens. I'm a principal planner here for the City of Quincy. And currently, no, excuse me, currently before the City Council is Amendment Four to the Urban Renewal Plan. As we've done in the past in a requirement of the DHCD regulations, the Planning Board has an opportunity to review and comment on the plan and ultimately vote on certain findings of the plan. I believe I have a draft of that finding vote for you here today. But before I get started with the presentation, I wanted to point out that this past Monday we had a first committee meeting at the City Council on this amendment. There was some discussion and feedback on elements, and there is a prior matter that's been before this board relating to urban renewal covenant and land disposition agreement language. We asked the vote, this body to vote on said language. It was generated by the City Council at that time. I'd like to report that the administration has added some language to the urban renewal plan, which is a little bit different than the plan that was communicated to you folks here, I think, a little more than a week ago. So I did want to give an updated copy of the urban renewal plan directly to you. I didn't want you to just get it in the mail and not really know what was changed. So it is an area in the urban renewal covenant section, so page 25 and 26. Again, I'm just pointing that out to this group. Thank you very much. Now, the Quincy Center Urban Renewal Plan has been in existence since 2007. It stemmed from the 2006 planning surets that the city hired the urban design firm of Goody Clancy to help the city assist with a lot of comments on the downtown. From the Vision Plan, we did adopt the urban renewal plan. There was two amendments that dealt with the Streetworks redevelopment proposal, and that also included the New Quincy Center land disposition agreement that was adopted back in 2010, 2011. It actually, it started in 10 and 11, went over in the new year. The Streetworks program did not meet its full potential, and the city part ways with Streetworks. In 2014, the city hired urban design consultant Redgate to come in and take a look at the market, look at Quincy Center, and Redgate produced a plan. And then, earlier this year, we came to you with Amendment Three, which expanded the boundary only to include the T station. And right now, now that that has been approved by the state, so right now, we're here with Amendment Four. Now, Amendment Four is the pivot away from the Streetworks master development agreement, and I just wanted to spend a little bit of time sort of going through the history I just described. Here is a plan from the Goody Clancy Planning Shorette. It concentrated, well, we've got Hancock Street right here. We're in the City Hall building right here with the Adams Green Park, Adams Hancock Green Park being constructed outside. The Goody Clancy plan looked at the Hancock Lot and the Ross Garage area and a lot of the private development in and around Quincy Center, and did sort of a what-if scenario here. The city used that Vision Plan and went ahead and adopted the original Quincy Center Urban Redevelopment Plan in 2007. And that plan zeroed in on the two main city assets, which is, again, the Hancock Lot and the Ross Garage area. And there was a goal in that plan in 2007 to dispose of both of those parking areas. They were both underutilized and reaching the end of their service life. But the idea was to dispose of those to a redeveloper that shares the city's vision of a revitalized downtown. The thought would be to create some new private development sites, and then also areas to rebuild new public parking garages, more modern facilities than what we have now. The Amendment One to the Urban Renewal Plan introduced Streetworks as a master developer, and this is the first Streetworks program, including the Hancock Lot again and the Ross Garage area, but it also included a lot of other private development in the downtown. Now, part of the Streetworks program is that private developer was going to pursue a lot of private acquisitions of land beyond the two public parcels. And the Streetworks redevelopment program, you know, contemplates redevelopment on a lot more than just the Hancock Lot and the Ross Garage. Another key component of the Streetworks plan was the introduction to a new bridge over the railroad tracks, Bergen Access Bridge, Clydesdale Bridge, it's been referred to both ways, to provide new access into the downtown, into the Ross Garage area here, and also some penetrations over into the Hancock Lot area. From Amendment One, we went to Amendment Two. This was the New Quincy Center Land Disposition Agreement. This was the final redevelopment program that was part of the agreement between Streetworks and the City of Quincy. Again, you can kind of see this Ross Garage area. You see a new Ross Way, just one roadway down where the existing Ross Garage was, sort of going away from this rotary around the garage, the parking way and road. You see Hancock Lot redeveloped. You've got new internal roadways there, providing a new, you know, new penetrations and new access points into the garage. We also, obviously, you know, you can see the concourse along here as well. And Streetworks also contemplated the Granite Trust Block, and I think, as we all know, that Streetworks did move forward with a proposal for that block called Merchant Road that was approved by the city, by this body. When the redevelopment agreement terminated, that deal terminated, but Quincy Mutual Insurance stepped in and came forward with a redevelopment program there called West of Chestnut, and that's what we see, you know, near completion today. This is the plan developed by Redgate. Again, they were called in after Post Streetworks to, you know, with their market knowledge to take a look at our downtown, to tell us whether, you know, there, you know, is a need and a demand for, you know, new development in downtown. That plan came back, and they agreed. Redgate started to reformulate the blocks. As you could see, these are very blocky blocks, just very conceptual, you know, perfect squares, you know, in real life, you know, nothing is too perfect like that. But we've taken that Redgate plan, and over the last year, we've drilled down further. Oh, then there's, sorry, there's the one Amendment Three. The Quincy Center T Station has, the garage facility, has been condemned for a number of years. The city has an agreement in place with the T, with DCAM, as the lead planning entity for that garage, and we felt it was beneficial to have that redevelopment in the urban renewal plan. So again, earlier this year, we went ahead with Amendment Three that just expanded the boundary. So that has brought us here today. This is the new redevelopment program that's being proposed in Amendment Number Four. Again, we are zeroing in on the Hancock Lot and the Ross Garage area, but the city is now in position to be a primary, you know, driver in redevelopment of these two sites. And at the moment, we are zeroed in on the Hancock Lot facility. We've been engaged with engineering firms, financial firms, parking firms, and we've done our due diligence on this site. At this time, we've got two developers that are interested in two of these sites. One of them is the property owner of 1500 Hancock Street, LBC Boston, who has made a proposal for a boutique hotel on this site. And the other site is this R1 site, which is closer to this portion of the lot. Now, in addition to those two, we have done our due diligence on citing a new parking garage, and we've identified this area that abuts the wall to Handan Parkway, Revere Road area, with internal access roads off of Dennis Ryan Parkway and Cottage Street. The idea is, you know, the concourse or Handan Parkway was built to move cars, you know, east-west, you know, through downtown, and if we had a major new curb cut into a garage on that road, we would risk creating more traffic congestion in that area. So the idea of citing a garage here would be to use the existing Miller-style intersection and have folks pull off of that road onto Dennis Ryan, and then either feed the garage right on Dennis Ryan or right through Cottage Ave. You can see the proposed LBC site here. This would be another site. We also think there is two other opportunities, redevelopment sites, R2 and R3 on either side of the garage. So with approval of the urban renewal Amendment Four, we believe that that endorsement by the Planning Board, by Citizens Advisory Committee, and by the City Council gives the city the ability to, without pursue designing the garage and pursue land disposition agreements with developers. In this Amendment Four program, you will see a number of the map set updated. Those maps are required under the urban renewal regulations provided by DHCD. There is one map called Acquisitions. I would point out, we have a number of acquisitions here. There is one here on Dennis Ryan Parkway. That was originally identified in the 2007 plan to unlock the Hancock Lot, and that is going to remain. 1500, it was also identified in 2007, and that one will remain too. And there's an interesting twist. I have an image to show you a little bit later. We are adding two additional properties here that haven't been previously identified, and they're right next to the 1500 block. And that, it's because, it kind of goes back, and there's a reason why I pointed out that Clydesdale Bridge, you know, coming in over Bergen Parkway, you know, through the Ross Garage site up Clydesdale, is, we feel like an urban design principle, there may be a benefit to come across Hancock Street and connect both the Hancock Lot and the Ross Garage. So we wanted to use this plan as an opportunity to identify it. Now, over on the Ross Garage site, there's this parcel right here. It's either 100 or 150 parking way. I'm sorry, confused on that one. But that one also has been identified from the original 2007 plan. So there's three private properties identified in 2007 plan, and there's these two additional ones here that, you know, could have a public use for the roadway element. Now, this is the Ross Garage here. Demolition is part of this map as well, so that one is currently or just about to be demolished with the help of the state grant. And then also, we've got the T Garage here that ultimately will be slated for demolition. The rule type, I did provide a copy of the presentation here, underlying new parcels. Again, you know, part of the city's focus right now is on the Hancock Lots. Once we get through this Amendment Four and get working on those development agreements, we'll be quickly shifting over into the Ross Garage area. There has been some minor discussions with property owners over there, but no full due diligence, and that's why we kind of left the Ross Garage area just kind of big blocky zones, but that most likely will be, will change on the next amendment, Amendment Five or Six down the road. Proposed parking and thoroughfare plan, this is, again, another map in the set. We're picking up new roads and streets internal to the Hancock Lot. Those, since the adoption of the urban renewal plan, the public infrastructure, we call them implementing public improvements, has always been on the city's side of the ledger to develop. This plan is both public and private to get development out of the ground. With the loss of the Ross Garage, we gone ahead and had a license agreement with the Mocina Group on the former Quincy Fair Mall site. I think folks will see that turn into a surface lot here soon. And once the Ross Garage is demolished, a new surface parking lot will be constructed in its place, and that's, you know, the interim parking plan until such time as we have new development come forward. Okay? Again, this is the current urban renewal plan Four. Now, I mentioned the implementing public improvements. Okay, I'm sorry. Here's a nice graphic that's been prepared, and we've got a couple of existing projects that we've approved already. The two maroon buildings over here is the West of Chestnut Revival Project, and, yeah. And then this is the Clydesdale Place condominium project that we approved last year as well. So both of those are underway. This is our concept of what the Hancock Lot could look like. So we're currently dealing with a developer that's interested in going high-rise with R1, and then H1 here is the work with the owners of 1500 block. This is a garage. Right now, we're estimating about 600 spaces to that garage. I believe it's about six levels, one level underground. There is, once we, once, again, once we get through this amendment and get a bead on financing for the garage, we're going to move forward with design on that very quickly. Here is R2 and R3, so two companion projects. And then there's the existing group of buildings that we're leaving untouched in this amendment at least. That's the Minneapolis, and then a few other here. Here is an image of the current West of Chestnut bracket. It sits adjacent to the Hancock Lot, and again, that's getting pretty close to being finalized. Again, here's the image of the Clydesdale Place project. Again, first floor retail, residential above. Here's the concept that's been made public before, a proposed residential tower in R1. And here is a new concept for the boutique hotels. I would say that we've looked at adding a number of penetrations to the Hancock Lot. We've been working with the owner on getting a public easement of a new covered public way right at the corner of Cottage Ave and Hancock Street right here, where the public will be able to pass right through internally to the Hancock Lot, which we feel is a very fascinating urban design element and a real benefit to that project and for the public access and egress. Yes, Paul?
When will the public way be open on West of Chestnut?
That's a good question. The developer, I believe, has got a target date of August for the second building. So I would have to think, as we approach, once major construction is completed on the site, leading into that August date, will the city be pushing for that public way to be open?
Thank you. Starting from?
Yeah, no. Yeah, we've had reports that, you know, first building is open and leasing up very quickly, so they've had some good initial leasing rooms. I mentioned the implementing public improvements, you know, that's the roadways, streetscapes, that's utilities. We did identify a sewer line that needs to get relocated in the Hancock Lot. It's going right to where we want to put a garage. In fact, for anyone that's been in the mayor's office, there's a very large picture of the Hancock Lot from a number of years ago that shows the old houses that were on the lot. And there was cottage shul that went from Cottage Ave to Revere Road, and that's, you know, when you're doing a surface lot, they just left the sewer in place, but here we are coming in with redevelopment, and, you know, that sewer line needs to get relocated. We also will be publicly funding the new garage as well, and part of the urban renewal plan, we've updated the public budget in there, and that's what we have here. Now, in these nine years since the urban renewal plan's been in place, we've done an awful lot. We've constructed the concourse roadway, we've started construction on the Adams Green project, and we've relocated the Tembro, not to mention a number of other utility improvements that folks don't see. We do believe we'll continue to fund, the city's strategies to continue to fund new parking garages, plazas, and utilities. In the budget, we identified the acquisition parcels. We've done an estimate using the assessors database and adding a premium, as well as our past experience with relocation, namely with the concourse roadway, and we have a property acquisition budget, that's an estimate. We also have demolition figures, public infrastructure figures. Now, this is for the whole plan, you know, $134 million. That's down, and just as a point of reference, with the Streetworks land disposition agreement, there was a commitment of close to $300 million in public infrastructure. That commitment is down significantly. A lot of that has to do with parking practices. Streetworks program had an awful lot of parking practices in it. And so this budget at this time is $134 million. Now, we are not going to move forward with $134 million worth of work at one time. What will happen, starting in the fall, is the city will come into the City Council for bond authorization, DIP bond authorization, for smaller chunks. So I mentioned a garage and a sewer line and some roads in Hancock Lot. It's our intent to package that in a smaller financing package. This is sort of the order of magnitude on that. And to help us with that budget, there's a number of ways we can get there. There's state and federal grants. Again, we get the Mass Works $5 million branch to demolish the Ross Garage. We have the Adams Green brand we recently got to help work out here, and some of the transportation work, actually, is fed off of an old federal transportation earmark that was originally for the concourse, and we've got reprogrammed for this project. The city also has preliminary approval for $40 million in IQ financing. IQ, for those of you that don't know, pledges state bonded capacity through state revenues. That's income tax, and that's sales tax, that, you know, new commercial, new job, commercial development that creates unique sales and jobs, the state will authorize up to $40 million in that. That, we don't think is going to occur in the near term. We think that'll occur more in the midterm, about three to five years out, but that's still in place, and that was put in place under the Patrick administration, and it was extended recently by the Baker administration. So we're real happy we have support from the state on that program. We also have proceeds from the sale of assets, so Hancock Lot and Ross Garage. Again, we're estimating when, that we would, if, once we dispose of portions of those garage to private developers, that they would be proceeds from that. And then there's bond financing, district improvement financing. That uses new tax growth in the downtown to fund specific bonds for the downtown. Now, over the last seven or eight years, we've been working off $40 million in bond authorization, DIP bond authorization. That's done things such as, you know, construct the concourse, do private property acquisitions for that, fund a number of other items. We are reaching the end of that $40 million, and we'll be most likely back before the council in the fall for additional funding, again, targeted to unlocking the Hancock Lot site. I will point out that we did submit a $1 million DIP bond authorization, just $1 million, to the council this past week. Our belief is, if urban renewal Amendment Four is approved, that we want to get a head start on designing of that new public parking garage. So we would like to continue to do some of the design work related to this plan, and obviously, there's other revenues, you know, where open and available to any grant programs that come about. So that's my presentation. I know each one of you have received a copy of that plan. Members Lynn and Camiso, I'm glad you're able to catch most of my presentation. I wanted to point out that there is a new version of the urban renewal plan I left for you on the desk. It has an updated date on the front of it. There was a, some language added to the urban renewal covenants in that, so I just wanted to point that out, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, folks, have any. Yes, Mr. Me?
With the loss of the Hancock and the Ro, Hancock and the Ross, what, how many parking garages will be built into the plan to accommodate not only the existing traffic of parking, but also the future?
Right. That's a really good question, and we don't have all of those answers right now. Right now, we need to concentrate on building that first garage in the Hancock Lot. We're at 600 spaces. That, currently, I believe it's in the low 500 spaces available today, so we'll go with 600 spaces. The idea as well is R2 and R3, those two additional redevelopment sites, would have parking in those, built into those redevelopment programs. So we're thinking of that one garage there. On the Ross Garage, we're contemplating either one or two, it could be two. It depends on the intensity of the development on that side.
Thank you. Any other questions?
How big are you anticipating that hotel to be room size wise?
Rooms, number of units, or it's anywhere, I believe, between 130 and 150 rooms. That's about the size. All first floor retail. That's a requirement in the downtown.
Other questions? Mr. Barry?
Chief want to understand next steps a little bit. So is this presentation just for our education right now, or are we voting to approve anything additionally? Because I know that there's something you want to share that affects your, you know, there's some sort of vote, something there?
Not sure tonight. We opened up the debate with the City Council on Monday. So the way, it's a technical answer, Member Barry. So when the city proposes a major amendment to the urban renewal plan, the City Council is charged with reviewing and approving that plan. As part of approval, the Planning Board has to make certain findings of the plan, that it meets the plan as a whole for the city. It meets the intent of, the original intent of the urban renewal plan, you know, being that the area is a blighted decadent area, and but for public action through the urban renewal plan, it would not be redeveloped, you know, through private means alone. So this board is charged with reviewing the layout of the plan itself and its goals, and finding that it does meet the plan as a whole for the city, and then recommends to the City Council that the City Council approve. So I am asking for a recommendation of this board to the City Council to approve that. We also have a, that's required by regulations, a Citizens Advisory Committee. We will be convening that group next week to do something similar, review the plan, offer comments and feedback, and then send in a recommendation, again, to the City Council for approval. Once the City Council approves the plan, or, I'm sorry, if the City Council approves the plan, I then package up that vote, the public hearing, meeting requirements, the vote of this body, the vote of the City Council, and that gets submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development for their review and final approval of the plan. Can I answer your question?
Okay. Any other questions? I would, I'd be looking for a motion to vote the following, and I'll read. Amendment Four, Urban Revitalization District Plan, whereas the Quincy Planning Board is required pursuant to section 48 of chapter 121b of the general laws and chapter 898 of the Acts of 1973 to reach certain conclusions regarding the Quincy Center Urban Revitalization and Development Plan, the plan, as submitted to this body, and whereas the project area as identified in the plan remains a decadent area, and whereas the project area would not by private enterprise alone and without either government subsidy or the exercise of governmental powers be made available for redevelopment, and whereas the proposed land uses and the building requirements in the URD project area will afford maximum opportunity to privately finance urban renewal and revitalization consistent with the needs of locality as a whole, now therefore be resolved by the Quincy Planning Board, one to report to the director of the Quincy One, to report to the director of the Quincy Department of Planning and Community Development, the mayor and the city council the following. Lowercase a, the board has determined that the plan is based on local survey, and lowercase b, the board has determined that the plan contains, conforms to the comprehensive plan for locality as a whole. Number two, recommends that the Quincy City Council and the mayor approve amendment four dated June 6, 2016, to the Quincy Center District Urban Revitalization and Development Plan. Number three, recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to proceed with urban renewal activities on the city's behalf as set forth in the plan. Number four, recommends that upon final approval of amendment four by the city council, that the Quincy Department of Planning and Community Development forward the URDP amendment number four to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development for final administrative approvals. So I would, looking for a motion for approval. So move. For a second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'd just like to point out to everyone in the audience, there is an advertised public hearing that the city council will be holding on Monday, June 20th, at 6:00 p.m. in the chamber above. We have copies of the plan in the planning department to review, and I believe the intent is to get this up on the front page of the city's website as well. If anybody's interested in looking at the plan in more detail, I'm providing a comment on that the 20th. Thank you.
I'm going to change the argument, because I want to protect the people who are here. The first item on our agenda is the continued public hearing for 500 Commander Shay Boulevard FedEx site plan and special permit, planning board case 2015 dash 50, continued from March 9, 2016. Board is in receipt of a letter addressed to the chair. Please accept this letter as a request to continue the public hearing on the above referenced project scheduled for June for September 24. The applicant at this time is trying to help resolve road conditions for Commander Shay Boulevard. Thank you for your condition, and look forward to discussing our project further with the planning board. Sincerely, Robert W. Renett. So we'd like a motion to continue till September 14. For a second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. The next item is a continued public hearing for 28 to 34 Chapman Street Site Plan Special Permit Planning Board Case 2015-47, continued from May 11, 2016. I'm in receipt of a letter addressed to the chair. On behalf of my client Chapman Corner LLC, I respectfully request a continuance of the public hearing for this case until the next available public hearing date. The applicant has continued to work on revisions to the parking layout of the building. Thank you for your consideration, very truly yours, Christopher Harry. Like a motion to continue this to August 24 of 2016.
So.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. The next item moving along for continuance is 264, the rare 264 Westwood Site Plan Special Permit Planning Board Case 2016-05, continued from May 11 to 2016. From motion to continue this until...
They want to go to July.
Okay, the July meeting? July 13?
Yep.
Motion. So moved. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The next item is the continued public hearing for 500 Commander Shay Boulevard Washington Scientific Special Permit Site Plan, Special Permit Board of Planning, occasion for 2016, continued from the May 11, 2016. I have a letter addressed to the chair. On behalf of the applicant, Washington Scientific Corporation, we respectfully request a hearing on Washington Scientific's application for a special permit for its facility at 500 Commander Shay Boulevard, scheduled for June 8, 2016. We continue it until the planning board's next regularly scheduled hearing. As you recall, the planning and community development department requested a May 11, 2016 hearing, that the matter be continued to June 7 to allow for discussions between the city and the applicant regarding the proposed site. A further continuance for the planning board's next regularly scheduled meeting will allow for the further discussions between the applicant and the planning and community development department regarding the proposed site. Signed by Matthew Sale. Motion to continue this to our July 13 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And, okay. I also have a request for continuance.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I was incorrect on the, on the cleverly court.
I'm sorry?
Cleverly court? No, they don't, they're not requesting a continuance. They're here tonight for that.
Okay.
We do have this, the 77 to 83.
There it is.
A public hearing scheduled for 77 to 83, Newbury Avenue Modification Site Plan Special Permit Planning Board Case 2016. The applicant, we're in receipt of a letter on behalf of my client, Kevin Yang, we request a continuance of the evening scheduled city of Quincy planning board hearing to Wednesday, July 13, 2016. We will need the extra time to prepare potential garage plans showing the possible parking in the basement of the existing building.
Mr. Chairman, we are going to need to continue that to August 24 instead of July.
Okay. We'll motion to continue to August 24.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think I got them all. Okay. The next item that we're going to pick up is the continued public hearing for 32 Gilson slash 18 Johnson Avenue Site Plan Special Permit Planning Board Case 2015 dash 49.
Thank you, outside.
Good evening. For the record, Mr. Grant Carroll, I'm here for the Murphys' applicant for the continued public hearing. I represent the Murphy brothers with me tonight. We have an architect, we have an engineer, we have some representatives from the city. I know you have a long agenda, so I'll start off immediately with our architect, Tim Johnson, to start off, give you a chronology of where the project started and where it is tonight after getting input these past few months.
Can everyone see those okay?
Yeah.
Can we get them back? Good evening, members of the board, attending neighbors and friends. My name is Tim Johnson, the project architect. This is a proposed residential development. This is our third presentation to the board, third redesign. And just to give you an idea of where this site is located, here's Hancock, and here's Adams, where they converge. Right before is Johnson Ave., and then Gilson Road. This is a unique site in many ways. It is accessed by two roads that ends the, different ends of the property. It has 11-foot grade change from Johnson to Gilson. And the zoning district boundary cuts through the property. So it's been a very, it's a very difficult site, but we feel that we've provided a solution, a design solution that sticks well with the, with the providers we're looking for and also what the board was looking for. So having said that, our last scheme that we presented was a five-story, 24-unit building with 39 parking spaces. This, 38 parking spaces. This scheme before you is a five-story building, 18 dwelling units, and 29 parking spaces, which gives a parking ratio of 1.26, spaces per dwelling unit, 1.5 is required. And the entire building footprint is in the business C zoning district. We do not encroach on the residence A zoning district, as we did in the previous scheme. So this is, this is the view from Johnson Ave., showing the garage entrance and the main entrance. This is the view from Gilson, showing the garage entrance and the main entrance. In the previous scheme, we had columns through the ground, making the building appear more massive. All the columns are down. All the columns are gone. Everything is either cancer levered or overhanging on the building. The footprint is entirely in business C zoning district. So these will be 18 dwelling units, two bedroom, two bath, around 1,100 square feet. We have a ladder servicing all floors, which makes each unit handicap adaptable. This is the site plan off of Gilson. Before, we were set back 30 feet from our butt, our butt in here on Linden Court. Now we're set back 60 feet. We are set back, we were set back 10 feet on the other side, and now we're set back 12 and a half feet. So we meet all the setback requirements for the zoning district. This is the site plan off of Johnson Ave., showing the right of way to our garage entrance and our main entrance. So we have six spaces, six, six parking spaces off this garage, off of Johnson Ave., and off of Gilson, we have 15 car garage. We've submitted a trash, a trash and recycling plan to the board tonight. We have a trash room on the Gilson side, and we got a trash room on the Johnson Ave. We also have a landscape plan. Showing planting along the north side of the property, which is the parking lot. We have planting along the east side, which is the abode of Linden Court, and we have some miscellaneous planting along the other side of the building. Of course, this building will comply with the Scratch Energy Code in the city of Quincy, which is 20% more energy efficient than current code. We also adhere to the Dark Sky Initiative. All lighting on this building will be one of two things, downlit and shielded, or on motion sensor. So minimizing light pollution to our bodies. External materials, we'll be using fiber cement products. I'm sure you're aware of several of them. Arid plant, arid plant, we have shindles inverted plant, and we have flatboard inverted plant. The windows will be fiberglass, doors and windows will be fiberglass frames. And you can see we have selected colors already for the building. Did revise our traffic study by Jack Gillum Associates, and I'll just read you the executive summary, which is two sentences, three sentences. 18 apartment units will generate approximately 13 trips during the morning weekday peak hour, and 10 outbound trips, 13 trips, 10 outbound and 3 inbound. So each day, you'll have 10 outbound trips and 3 inbound trips for this project. As can be seen by these two exhibits, the projected traffic impact on the neighborhood streets due to this project will be de minimis, which is negligible, especially after discounted trips previously generated by the two multifamily homes. So I know we're not in front of the zoning board, but we have a zoning analysis for this project. We will need relief for two items. One is lot size, and one is lot frontage. We do not need relief for height, FAR, which is your density multiplier, setbacks, parking, open space. We have fulfilled all those requirements of the zoning district. So only two sections of the code we need relief from. Lot size, lot size and frontage. And with that, I will turn it over to the board for questions. Oh, I'm sorry, where's my, I have a civil engineer here. I apologize.
We can skip over. Hey, Michael Joyce, Joyce Consulting Group, the engineer for the project. Just to follow up on Tim's point about traffic, I think, Tim, you said 10 trips outbound, 3 trips inbound, that's during the peak hour, if that's not all day. I think the traffic report estimated 120 trips over the day for the project. So as Tim had mentioned, we have 14,200 square foot lot, but an 11-foot difference in grade from the Johnson Ave. side to the Gilson Road side. Gilson Road is 11 feet lower. Currently proposing a 18-unit building with 21 parking spaces inside, 6 parking spaces off of the Johnson Ave. on the interior, 15 in the lower level off Gilson Road, and then 8 surface spaces. There'll be 88 accessible spaces both in the garage and one out in the exterior parking The proposed storm water will be collected from the roof and roof leaders, directed to an infiltration area below the parking area. The parking lot runoff will be collected via catch basin, a storm septic inlet catch basin, which will treat it, remove the oil and grit, and also directed to the infiltration area. It's a very similar system as was proposed previously. The dimensions that have just been shifted slightly in order to make it, now that we have added space in the parking areas, shifted away from the property lines a little bit more. Also proposing new water, sewer, gas services to the building. Proposed transformer will be off of Johnson Avenue to the south of the building. All the sidewalk, there'll be new concrete sidewalks in the area of the proposed project, the addition of ADA compliant ramps at Linden Court, and then also across Gilson Road to Linden Court. The interior parking spaces will be curved, landscape surrounding, and I think that's about it.
Could the applicant walk us through the discussions with the city council and the neighbors since you left before the board?
The discussion was, there was a concern about the residence A issue. They pulled it out of residence A, they cut it back, put it into the business sector. And then there was the issue about parking, and they pulled it within the footprint of the building.
Were there a public meeting? I'm sorry. I mean, the, what happened between the last meeting and...
The developer spoke with the counselor, and then the counselor posted it to her website.
Okay, so... Okay, so no public meeting?
No.
Okay.
Members of the board, Paul Heinz, Assistant City Solicitor. Counselor LaFarris is involved in the finance committee meeting upstairs. She said she was down there, but she was just called up for a vote. She is asked that you allow her the opportunity to speak to the matter, so if you can defer a public question out to her, she may be able to inform you as well.
Sure. Any other questions?
Okay, this is a continued public hearing. So I would ask anyone who wishes to speak, identify themselves, and hopefully accommodate. We have sheets over on the window sill for those that don't want to speak, want to be recorded. So, turn it up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Andrew Sutton, Weber Bronstein, Three Central Plaza Boston, Massachusetts, representing the owner of the lot Sullivan Tire property. I can answer your question, Vice Chairman Barry. There has been no discussion with the abutters, and I was frankly surprised that there was no outreach, given my lengthy comments at the last meeting. Point of fact, I'm not going to raise or debate zoning issues with respect to the property. I disagree that it's only two relief requests that they're going to need to make. I could just point out an accessory parking issue that I'm seeing right there in the RA district, where guests aren't necessarily allowed to park in the RA district. But we'll leave that for the ZBA. My concern is this, we're here tonight not to throw shade on this project or cast dispersion. Our issue, and a lot of the others, other abutters issue has always been scope. And we're seeing the project scaled down, it's headed in the right direction. But what we hoped by appearing at the meeting was the ability to sit down with the developer and try to avoid any further issues with their process, so that the town can realize the redevelopment of the blighted property that, that they purchased. That, that really hasn't happened. I would prefer not to have to continue to oppose this design, and I would hope that the board would suggest that the developers sit down with the abutters, which, you know, frankly, I think everybody here thought was probably going to happen. I've been following Counselor LaFarris' blog, and she only updated it on May 30. And, you know, that, that wasn't a significant amount of time to reach out to the neighbors. So effectively, I'm surprised at the developers' lack of communication or consideration for the issues raised by not just the commercial neighbor, but the residential neighbors, to, to see if this design works for them. I understand their timeframe and their timetables, but I really do think that if we sat down and maybe took this to another meeting, we would be able to get a plan before you that might work for everybody.
Sir.
Yeah, Richard Garofin, under the 28 Turkey Gilson Road, and no one reached out to us, and I live directly, and they find out that this is a five-story building, whereas in actual fact from Gilson Road, if you flick the page, it's a six-story building. Do you want to flip the page? And that's my point, that's been my argument all along, that in a neighborhood of predominantly single and two-family homes, people have a six-story building, people would essentially go, this is Gilson Road, and they appear as six stories. So that's my point.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wants to speak? Sir?
Joseph Shaheen, the owner of 14 Johnson Ave. Still talking about the same things, about parking and driveway from 14 Johnson Ave. If you're talking about 128, if they said the correct amount of cars come and go, that street is driveway, it's not a street. It's one-way, so it's not two cars will go into that street. So when you go in, you have to, somebody has to move to the sidewalk for them to pass. Again, when you get to Hancock Street, okay, there's no view to the people coming and going from Hancock Street. So you have to cross the sidewalk of Hancock Street for you to see the car is coming and go. And then where the snow is going to go? If the people parking on, on that driveway, on the street, it's only one car. This is two-car garage. So it's one-way goes back and forth. How they can be measured, you know, going back and forth when it's only one car can go this way? And there is no, for police or file department, and it's the right way, you cannot use the right way. They are using the right way. That's illegal for them to use that. They have a right to go there, and let anybody else. And when you have that kind of high building, we are, we are close, I don't know, there's no, there's no distance between me and, and 18 Johnson Ave. It's like probably eight feet or 10 feet. That's going to be, all everything is blocked from the, from the north shore, from the north of the house, you know, 14 Johnson Ave, and from the south of Johnson Ave. That's going to be blocked, it's not, it, 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 it does not exist there. That's all I think I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wants to speak? Paul Heinz.
Again, members of the board, Paul Heinz, Assistant City Solicitor. The planning department did ask me to review the issues with regard to the right-of-way that is so-called Johnson Avenue. And I did provide the board with a memorandum, comprehensive memorandum back in April. And following conversations with Attorney Sutton, I did give you a supplemental one yesterday, which had requested, and I see that it's happened, to put an additional condition in the site plan review permit, which required the applicant to demonstrate to the satisfaction of the law department their rights in Johnson Avenue and any rights that others may have, including the portion of that is on lot B, which becomes the footprint of a portion of this building. So I do see that it was included in the, in the recommended findings, in the recommended order, so I'm thankful for that. If there are any other questions, I'm certainly here available for you.
Thank you, Attorney Heinz. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Sure. Arthur Kianovis, manager of the IFRD Descendio Trust to our owners of the Sullivan Tire. I haven't seen a copy of the, of the study done for traffic. I'm asking the board, has the engineer studied and addressed the problem that Mr. Shaheen actually has, has brought forward, and we echoed and shared his sentiments from the last meeting? If we were to drive down there tonight, I think I said this the first time, you would have a hard time making access or getting access to Hancock Street without being blind to the traffic coming from the left. So as you're traveling out the driveway, Sullivan Tire's building is to the left. Sullivan Tire's building is on a zero lot line. Effectively, you're right directly on the edge of our property line. It's made out of brick, it's not made out of glass, you can't see through it. Any car that travels in a direction towards Hancock Street has to, by design, this is the way it was designed, this is the way it was done, physically go across the sidewalk in order to be able to get a sideline directly to the left. Now, I dare say, there's a light there. We all know the lights are designed for traffic flow. They stop cars from going with a red light, they allow cars to go with a green light. Unfortunately, through the laws of nature, not everybody follows these laws. Speeding tickets are given for going too fast, tickets are given for going through red lights. In this particular case, on this particular road, I use the word road, because for all intensive purposes, I dare say, when the developer goes forward for his financing, unless he's got a lot of money, he's going to pay cash out of his pocket, he's going to go for title insurance. I defy a title examiner to take a look at this particular street, road, access, Eastman, call it what you want, and be able to determine that the rights on Johnson Road are inherently feasible for the developer to be able to get this title insurance. So as far as I'm concerned, my issue is safety, first and foremost. Whoever comes out of that road and tries to beat that red light, tries to beat the yellow light, can't possibly see what's on his left. He's going to be looking left and right, like we all do. But when he looks to the right, he can see perfectly well. When he looks to the left, he's going to see a brick wall. That, if there was nobody on the street, there was nobody going up and down that sidewalk, in one way, nothing should happen. But you have a center directly next door, which generates foot traffic. I don't know what the hours of operation of the center next door, maybe, maybe you gentlemen and ladies might be able to tell me, but people come out of there with baby carriages with kids. That's a health center of some sort. And if a person wants to beat that yellow light, just to get out on Hancock Street, like we all do, I've run through tons of yellow lights. I'm sure everybody here has probably gone through yellow lights too. It's only human nature. But in this particular case, in that particular area, you are creating an accident waiting to happen. I expect to get sued at some point if something isn't done to correct that particular problem. Keeping in mind that that brick wall is a brick wall. Cars go through brick walls all the time. We see it in the newspaper, we see it, we see it in the news all the time. People go through brick walls, they get killed. Well, in this particular case, I really don't think that anybody's going to be going that fast to go through this, this brick wall, but keep in mind, I've got people on the other side of that brick wall, in that building. So the site itself really is not conducive to a lot of traffic, period. It was designed originally for three lots. How many people could be in those three lots? Four, five, six, maybe seven? Here, you're telling us there's going to be 18 units. The traffic survey is telling us they're going to have only 10 people coming out during the morning, and three people or four people returning, I can't remember what was said here. But I'd like to see whether or not the traffic survey does in fact, the engineer does in fact, address that problem of the building, our building, my building, on the left-hand side with access coming out to Hancock Street, without creating a dangerous problem for whoever is crossing the street or coming across that driveway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kianovis.
Just wanted to point out that the, this, the garage off of Johnson Ave is now significantly smaller than it was previously. I think previously it had 10 or 12 spaces, now it has 6 proposed spaces, and I believe the plan is to have those assigned to residents, so that there won't be any visitors accessing through Johnson Ave. In addition, as Mr. Kianovis had mentioned, there is a traffic light at the end of Johnson Ave, and that traffic light is actuated, so there's a traffic loop in the, the ground there prior to the sidewalk. So that's just, just for your knowledge.
Can I make my point also? And, and it was brought up the last day about the size of these garage openings, like, I think we mentioned that article, whatever size, that can two cars, you know, move in and out at the same time? And maybe you can pass that question?
The garage doors now are currently 12 feet wide.
Both of them?
Both.
12 feet, so two cars can go back and forth.
If the board, if the board wants to, we can certainly, in terms of those doors, to whatever you think the guys can pass.
Well, I'd know what, but I would say a minimum of at least 16 feet, but that's, in general terms, 12 feet if you, you walk at two cars. And a lot of these parking spots would diagnose, describe as compact parking spots? I mean, it's not...
Not on, not on this plan, no.
Not on this one? Okay.
We, we're pretty true to the required sizes. There are no compact...
And that's all street parking is like, and it's all good for the building?
That's correct. We don't show any compact spaces. But we can certainly, by the doors, if the board...
Well, it would only make sense, because I mean, you, you already have traffic issues. There's someone trying to get out, someone trying to get in, they can't back down, you know, the whole dead-end streets, you can't back out of either street, so that would be a concern.
There's no way, there's no room for two cars to go back and forth, that, that is no room. You have one, right way of, of one car, that's a...
So Johnson Ave right-of-way is 25 feet wide. So...
Right way is...
25 feet wide is right-of-way on Johnson Ave. So you could get two cars in any direction.
I don't think, because you have no path on the street.
Well, right now, it's, it's, it's an unapproved street.
Yeah, so it's not on the street, so where, where are there going to be two cars? There's only one side, it's hard to get two, two cars in.
Existing conditions may not allow two cars to pass, but you do have a 25-foot right-of-way. If you improve it, you could get two cars passing in that direction.
If I could just ask a question, Tim, is there not room within the garage for two cars to maneuver back and forth? It's a 24-foot wide aisle between parking spaces.
Yes. The garages are designed so that cars can turn and, and head nose-first out the door, so there wouldn't be any backing out. We have a 24-foot wide aisle on the lower floor, right, 24-foot wide aisle on the lower floor, and the upper floor has a very, yeah, let me show you. So we have 24 feet here, and Mike, I believe you've done some...
I have, yeah, we've, we've performed some turning movements within the garage to ensure that cars maneuver around the columns and also back out without any significant issue.
So...
Back out of space.
Back out, and then head nose-first. On the Gilson side, you can see here, we have space where you can head out nose-first on the Gilson side.
The intention of the 12-foot wide door was not to have two cars pass at the same time, but wait for one to come in or out, and that's right.
Well, like the last week, it was brought up that, you know, obviously having two cars passing is a better idea for traffic on the two streets, because they are there.
I just, I just want to add one thing, so what, what they said, when you're coming from Hancock Street, and that, uh, light, and you come in and you want to come into Johnson Ave, that's 90 degrees, okay? There's no, you cannot widen it to come in into the, uh, Johnson Ave. So so many times, you have, you, you will step up on a sidewalk. So if, if this car's going and you're coming in to Johnson Ave, somebody's going to move back and forth. So that's going to be holding traffic on Hancock Street, or the other guy, if he can drive backwards, okay? That's going to be a problem. So imagine if this coming few cars, it's 128, they're taking back and forth on Hancock Street and Johnson Ave, that's a lot of that.
Tim, if I, if I could, I think on the Johnson Ave entrance, it's a six-car garage.
Right.
So if there were two single-family homes there, they could each have three cars, I would imagine? Or if there were two, two-family homes, or whatever, smaller...
I have four credit to the home.
Right, so you have...
So we have five cars.
Right, you have five cars on your site. This, for the number of units on the site, has few cars going on Johnson. These are the only cars that will be going down Johnson Ave, are the six cars in that lot.
Wait, so there are three?
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt.
We have the, the, has the parking, what do you call it, that building on Hancock Street, whereas when you go into Johnson Ave, that building on the left, they have, in the end of it, they have parking, fit about 16 cars, 14 cars. So those, those cars is coming into Johnson Ave each.
Sure. But what they're proposing for Johnson Ave, for this building, is only six automobiles. And I believe the, the, these cars that get these spaces will know, it's not like they're going to be fighting for spaces with the people on the first floor, right? They'll be assigned spaces, yeah.
Sorry to, sort of sharpen your point, there are three lots there now. Even if it's a single family, you probably have two cars per family, or six cars, so that's all we're, going into the garage on Johnson Ave is six cars.
Sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, not to complicate the roadway issue any further, I just wanted to point out that Johnson Ave, for all intensive purposes, as we're discussing it, is, is the area that's up on lots B and C, and that this right-of-way here is only a 20-foot right-of-way that extends a lot across the health center.
that extends a lot across the health center land. So it's not as simple as a twenty-five-foot area or a nav or roadway. It really is more complicated and uncertain as to the width of the roadway down here, the status of that roadway. I mean, you know, it's, again, it's an issue that I'm not gonna try to dispose of. I've talked to Paul about this at length before the hearing. And, you know, we both agree to disagree on some issues, but we both recognize that there are potential issues here with respect to the roadway that need to be resolved, which I think is reflected in your...
If I could speak to that.
We haven't had a disagreement on the width of the road. We've only had...
Correct.
I do not agree with you on...
On other issues, other issues.
I will say that of the reserved rights in Johnson Ave, nobody has a right to park on Johnson Ave. So if anybody's parking on Johnson Ave, that is an offender. Twenty-five feet or even twenty feet is wide enough for two cars to pass. So I believe one of your conditions is that we're proposing no parking on Johnson Ave. But that is the status of it now. The rights of way do not allow parking. They're to pass and repass only.
Thank you for your answer. Anybody else that hasn't spoken?
Existing conditions.
Sure.
Yes, Michael Griffin. I live at nine and eleven Linden Court. And talked a lot about Johnson Ave and the traffic there. Linden Court is a dead end and also a private way. So my concern is the traffic impact on that street. And cars now either trying to cut through, they always come down, look around. I'm worried about the impact from all these crests. Cars trying to get by each other, somebody's gotta pull down. That's your mic display down in the street. We got cars coming down, so... That's my, I'm on the other dead end. And that's my main concern, is the impact on Linden Court and also parking. If they can't get me, or they got friends coming over, will there be no parking on Linden Court? Or am I gonna have, we're gonna have cars lining our street? That's my very big concern on that.
Okay, thank you. Sir, we'll be back.
David Rosen, Levin-Gilson Road. I'd like to scale it down. And my concern is with parking, Gilson doesn't have any sidewalks. So if this does go forward, I don't know whether it's on the developer or on the city. But you need to make that into a sidewalk going up Gilson at some point and enforce the no parking that's supposed to be there. Because already there are plenty of people from the apartment buildings at the top of the road who park on the street. And it might be a broader question for us if he counts in terms of no parking in general, then there's supposed to be no parking. And just the entrance to Gilson Road and Greenleaf. Greenleaf is a very busy street. People use it to cut through. And people park right up onto the corners. And so that's something that needs to be addressed. I don't know, the traffic studies considering much about the traffic flow on and off of Gilson Road. It's a very difficult turn to make it every morning. And I'm not speeding to reach that yellow light or anything. But there are people who are driving well over the speed limit, and you can't see because of the cars. So if, you know, if this type of thing goes forward, there's... The city has to look at the streets and around it and the impact that it has. Because it does need for dangerous turns and then for pedestrians as well, so... But to scale down size of it is much more appealing than the twenty-four units. Ideally, I'd love to see fifteen, but I much prefer the eighteen to the twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Anyone else who hasn't spoken? Got everybody?
Oh, and, sorry, and the, I read the fire impacts survey. It said that water needs to probably have to be replaced in order to spice the sprinkler system. That was one of the things that Margaret posted on our website. So the pipes are pretty old on the street. I know it's my pipe stock. So that might be something that, I don't know if that's city or developer, but that's something that has to be considered.
Mr. Joyce.
We did perform hydro flow tests. Unfortunately, we were doing it, the hydrogen on Gilson Road actually broke. So we couldn't get a flow right into Gilson Road, but we did get flows.
Probably because it's so old.
Yeah, so there, I don't know if it's been replaced yet, but it's planned to be replaced. Once that's replaced, we'll perform the flow test. But the flow test, we did perform a flow test at the intersection of Greenleaf and Gilson. At the, right in front of the community building there, at the intersection of Hancock and Johnson Ave. Both lines had really good flow. So like I said, once we have Gilson repaired, we'll also perform the test there. The other thing, we are improving the sidewalks, but only up to Linden Court. I think one of the problems, what you got further up, you do mention is a lot of the parking pull in, one of those sidewalks.
Sidewalks.
So, but...
Anybody else that has not spoken?
I'll turn. Good evening, Margaret Lefaris, Board of Mayor Council. Just by show of hands, who is here in the room specific for this project? I missed a few of the comments out, and I just wanna make sure I'm familiar with everybody here. Okay, so, board, good evening. Sorry for my multitasking, it's the start of my life. As you know, you, it sounds, there's a lot of, I think for the viewer at home, if you're here, is that a lot of this work is done with the planning board, the planning director offline that I'm not involved in the day-to-day up by policy of legislative position that I'm in. We had a lot of concerns at the last meeting. Literally, the document just arrived in my hands today. And this is the recommendation from the planning board. And it's twenty-six conditions, kind of addressing some of the comments that you're making. So literally half the press, this is in my hands, it's on my website. What I did, just so that you're aware, is we had said before, is this gonna happen, June eight? We sent out an email, letting people know about it a week and a half ago. Did send them a reminder for the meeting. I think the same people have really been consistently concerned about this. And I appreciate you all took the time to be here and to speak up and share your concerns. Because a lot of what's been said is, that I was going to say, has been mentioned. Couple of things, particularly Dave, that you mentioned about that are in these conditions, I just wanna share, share specific. We had talked about pedestrian safety and improvements to the area. Being conditioned on this project to the commitment of the applicant, not the city. Applicants shall provide a stop sign with a, at Linden Court and Gilson Road, and another one at Gilson and Greenleaf. Applicants shall upgrade curb ramps at the following locations to be ADA compliant. Gilson Road and Linden, Gilson Road and Greenleaf. No parking signs on Johnson. Trying to think what else we had in here. I hear you on the sidewalk. I don't know, I know Gilson's pretty narrow, and I'm not sure it would have the width to allow for sidewalk, but if we could get...
Well, there's a, it's already, it's already curbed, but it's not, it doesn't have...
It has asphalt burn, not curbing?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Okay, does it have the width? So a lot of times on roads, it's a matter of, it's probably too narrow, but if they're adding the curbing. But if we could get a commitment from the administration to take a look at making it a more, you know, sidewalk, because what you're saying is that they're gonna park on the asphalt burn. If it was curbing, they would be parking on the sidewalk, and that would kind of help with the problem in the area.
Well, you move people, you can't walk up the street. You can't walk on the sidewalk, you have to walk...
You have to walk on the street because they're parking on the sidewalk. Got it. So the other thing I think is important to hear, and I've had some phone calls, and the police have been responsive. We're actually upstairs, the meeting's on tonight, is traffic and parking enforcement and, you know, what the strategy is, because it's not, what we have right now is not working. And it's kind of a, they're having people park on their street. So this is the existing conditions, is, hey, we're parking the street, there's no law of the team. Where can I park? The parking control officer doesn't find me. Gilson Road's a great spot for that. They can tuck a way in there. So I'd like to see from the administration comments to go back to the police department. Captain Gillen's familiar with me calling in this area, but that we send the parking control officer, they're not having that impact. It does not belong in the neighborhood. And while we're right off Hancock Street, you know, clearly we've got neighbors here, and it is a little neighborhood tucked in the back there. So the other thing is twenty feet of an intersection. The rule is no parking with twenty feet of an intersection. It's state law. It's ignored all over the city. And what it is, is that sightline that you're talking about, to say for us to exit Gilson Road, turn onto Greenleaf, in and out, is difficult to see because of the visibility, because people are parking there. So I hear you a lot on Claire. This is one of my biggest, biggest frustrations as a ward counselor. Okay, other issues, so administration comments, if those can go back. Heard it from the neighbors, heard it from me. That is the existing condition, and it's very frustrating. The water, I think you just addressed, and I was just gonna speak up about that, about the fire flow. What do we say? Okay. Found adequate pressure in the hydrants on the site, have made a condition. They ensure adequate water flow with the fire department and water department prior to getting the building permits. So that's something that is conditioned in here. I will post this, and I can actually give you guys this copy, so that I can pass it around. Counselor, I'm sorry, if I could...
This is my recommendation that I typically give to the board. They have not actually gone through them on either. These may change before they go.
Okay, I wasn't quite sure we were in the process. Okay. So you'll see this extensive homework being done. I will say, a lot of due diligence here. Margaret is the principal planner. She's been the, you know, the lead, working with the applicant, working with the department, has working in coordination on that. She has what?
How many, twenty-six conditions on this?
At the present time, but there may be a few additional.
So you don't have...
Got it. Okay. So I think with that, you've heard my concerns, a lot of it's been addressed. I kind of hoped that, you know, it's coming down to the minute hour, they're trying to get this onto the agenda. I think it's sometimes helpful as these things, you know, projects, just as a point of reference, get kicked down, kick the can down the road. We really kind of have that summary, what changed? Because for me, I was hearing a lot of this for the first time, while I got a few documents and had some homework that I could do in advance of tonight's meeting. Tonight was my opportunity to listen, and here I am, running between two meetings. So that's just difficult on a policy perspective. So I think sometimes when you've got a project change with major changes like this, if we could get kind of an executive summary that's gonna come out with any plans, would be helpful going forward. Anybody else, anything in particular we're missing and felt wasn't heard? Okay, so with that, I'm looking forward to the, kind of your board's discussion and hearing your input. Feeling like I missed some pieces, so...
Thank you, Coach. Any questions? Mike?
There were just a couple of items that, we met with the applicants on Monday and went over a lot of the outstanding issues. Tim, you were gonna submit the trash plan. Did you put those copies? We were unable to copy those today.
Peter, Dave, do you have the copies I gave you? I'm sorry, Margaret, I thought, Dave, I thought you were...
No, that's fine. They were, we did discuss their trash removal plan. They made some changes to the site so that that would be more accommodating. I think the other item that came in was the memo from Paul Hines. And he made some suggestions about...
Email.
The, I'm sorry?
The memo spoke to the condition on Wrightston Johnson. The other is just in an email form.
Right, that were in the email, yes. And I have, I think you have a copy of that in your, in your bag, I mean, in your packet. Some of these conditions, we felt we could add without too much discussion, but we did want to just have some discussion with the applicant about certain things. The lighting on Johnson Ave, there was a suggestion to put a a streetlight on the poles on Johnson Ave.
I did visit the site today. In fact, there are two telephone poles on Johnson Ave, but that could be utilized.
Well, what the question was, is we weren't sure how that process would work. Whether the applicant would have the right to put a streetlight on the pole? Yeah, if the...
Margaret was here today, and believe it or not, it has a streetlight on one of the poles. It just needs fixed. It just needs fixed. You couldn't see it underneath all the trees, but it does have one there.
There is one on the light?
Which one? Where?
Right in front of eighteen Johnson, right in front of, where they're on Johnson. You get the two houses right there.
The second one is from Hines.
Yeah, second one, I guess.
Then I think we could make a condition that they go through the process to repair that light and have the applicant's... The other one, the other discussion that we wanted to have was about the upgrades and repairs to Johnson Ave. It is, we understand it's a small road and does need certain, you know, repairs. It most likely is adequate for six more additional vehicles on the site. But what we wanted to talk about was during construction, there could be the possibility of damage. So what we wanted to condition was that if any damage was done during construction, the applicant's responsible to repair that. That we did make one of our conditions. The other one was the idea of a fence between the, from your email, Paul, it seemed like it was from the corner of the building, but there is a fence there currently on the Sullivan Tire property. So did they want them to extend it from that fence along their full property line, or...
The fence that you referred to, that is at Sullivan, is completely a four-foot fence. And it is in some other state or districts here. And then to the next about it, there's a gap. And then there's another district repair fence. So the thought was, at the request of Tony Sacks on behalf of his client, if they fenced from the Firestone Building, the full length out along Johnson Avenue.
Sullivan Tire.
I could say that all day. It was called a Jimmy Tire earlier.
Yeah, hurt my tenant. He's mad with me.
Sullivan Tire. From the corner of his building, down the abutting property lines behind Whitney Road with a, so-called Johnson Avenue, up to the end of the project site. So would dissuade people from parking on Whitney Road and passing on foot through the abutting parcels to get to this development. So I admit, I read it after the fact, and if you made sense of any of it, you got it, didn't I? But it runs from the building to the end of the project site, kind of at the butt of Gilson Road. But between Johnson Avenue and one A, to the abutment side of Whitney Road.
My son and my brother, we were down tonight and went clear the gentleman's buildings. We will put a fence, a six-foot fence, all the way down to Johnson and attach to the next one. We have no problem with that.
And rather than...
I have no fence, we're gonna put up, no, we're...
Okay. Rather than a condition, you can show that on the final plan. Those were the only issues that we had outstanding. The tracking of the fence, other than that, we... That's about all that we were looking for at this point.
Two more to which to close the public hearings or a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a recommendation?
Please do, yes. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Based on the City of Quincy's interdepartmental review and the outside peer review, the department recommends that the board approve site plan review in accordance with Quincy zoning ordinance Title 17, Section 9.5.1, and special permit under Quincy zoning ordinance Title 17, Section 5.1.17, for parking waiver subject to the following conditions. The project is subject to the inclusionary zoning ordinance. The applicant shall contact the Affordable Housing Trust Committee for their recommendations through layage on-site units or cash in lieu of such units. Any recommendation by the Affordable Housing Trust shall be incorporated into the planning board's special permit decision. To the applicant shall seek approval from the City of Quincy zoning board of appeals or zoning enforcement officer as appropriate for any necessary relief or findings related to the City of Quincy zoning ordinances, as same are not under the authority of the planning board. Number three, due to some controversy surrounding the applicant's ability to build within the area identified as Johnson Avenue, prior to obtaining building permits, the applicant or the applicant's attorney or other representative shall establish to the satisfaction of the Quincy City Solicitor that no rights were obtained by the then-town of Quincy or others by virtue of such an act, and which rights, if any, would prohibit the applicant from now building in the footprint of the so-called Johnson Avenue. Number four, the applicant shall provide the fire protection engineer's system demand calculation for the building to the fire department prior to obtaining building permits. Number five, the applicant shall conduct a water flow test to determine if there is sufficient water supply in the street to support the sprinkler system and the required standpipe system demands in the building. This report shall be submitted to the fire department prior to obtaining building permits. The Johnson Road is a private way and shall remain private. The applicant and owners of this development and any other owners of Johnson Avenue shall continue to be responsible for the maintenance of Johnson Avenue. Number seven, prior to final occupancy permits being issued, the applicant shall install no parking signs along the southern edge of Johnson Ave in order to discourage vehicles from parking on this road and possibly obstructing the flow of traffic to and from the subject site. Number eight, the applicant shall provide a stop sign and city standard pole with a twelve-inch stop line on Linden Court at Gilson Road and on Gilson Road at Greenleaf Street. Number nine, the applicant shall re-strike the crosswalk on Linden Court at Gilson Road and on Gilson Road at Greenleaf Street. If I could just interject here also, the applicant did show us some revised plans that show additional... that show additional, uh, crosswalks on, um, Gilson Road to get to Linden, Linden Street, Linden Court. Uh, number 10, the applicant shall upgrade curb ramps at the following locations to be ADA compliant, Gilson Road and Linden Court, Gilson Road at Greenleaf Street. Number 11, the applicant shall provide a construction management plan to include detailed traffic management plans including temporary traffic control, crosswalk detours, construction truck routes, staging areas, and other protections at least one month prior to the start of construction to the city's traffic engineer for review and approval. No construction vehicles related to this project shall be allowed to obstruct vehicle access to the neighborhood of Gilson Road or Johnson Avenue or to obstruct access to any driveways of residents on these roadways. Number 12, the applicant shall be responsible to repair any damages to Johnson Ave that occur during the construction of the project to the satisfaction of the city's Department of Public Works. Number 13, hours for delivery of materials during construction shall be determined by the city's traffic engineer upon submission of the construction management plan. Number 14, the applicant shall submit documentation indicating that construction activities at 32 Gilson Road, 18 Johnson Ave will not result in rodent issues for abutters. The applicant shall develop a rodent control contingency plan prior to the commencement of construction activities onsite, which will include the name and contact information for an on-call pest control company. Number 15, the applicant shall develop a dust control plan to be implemented during any site activities to ensure compliance with state air quality regulations. Number 16, the applicant shall commit to performance with both local and state regulations regarding noise as proposed construction could create noise generating activities. Number 17, demolition. Newly amended regulations require a pre-demol- demo survey for any potential asbestos-containing materials to be conducted by a DLI certified inspector. If asbestos-containing materials are present, it must be removed by a licensed contractor and a post-abatement inspection must be performed by DLI certified project monitor. A pre-demolition inspection of this structure will be required to be performed by the Board of Health Department. Number 18, the state sanitary code, the residential units proposed to be developed will be required to meet all provisions of Article 2 of the state sanitary code. Number 19, applicant shall install survey monuments to be deline- to delineate the public rights of way. The monuments shall be set by a professional land survey prior to issuance of occupancy permits. Um, upon completion of the project, the applicant shall furnish to the City of Quincy Building and Engineering Departments a digital file of ASGIL plans showing all utilities, building footprints, reference files, and benchmarks defining the total site facilities and rights of way. Twenty-one, the applicant shall submit a stormwater operation and maintenance plan which shall be recorded at the Norfolk County Registry of Streets and will include the following: stormwater management system owner, the party responsible for operation and maintenance, an estimated operation and maintenance budget, and a maintenance log form. Um, okay, number 22 is, uh, just further on the, uh, operation and maintenance plan. The owner shall be required to submit a copy of the completed stormwater operation and maintenance plan, inspection schedule, and evaluation checklist form stamped by a professional engineer annually to the City of Quincy Department of Public Works in order to document compliance with the approved O&amp;M plan. And one week prior to any land disturbance activities, the applicant shall conduct an onsite inspection with the City of Quincy and/or the city's designated representative to observe the erosion controls installed at the site and review the erosion controls anticipated to be employed during construction. Number 24, at any point during construction, the applicant shall allow the City of Quincy and/or the city's designated representative to enter the site for the purpose of making observations as to the compliance of site construction with the approved site plans and conditions of approval. Uh, number 25, the City of Quincy A at its discretion use consultants to supplement city staff for, but not limited to, the purpose of site construction observation. The consultant review ASGIL plan shall be fully funded 30 days prior to any land disturbance activities. And number 26, the hours for construction activities will be 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturdays. All construction and delivery shall be prohibited on Sunday unless approved by the chief of police. The hours for delivery of materials shall be determined by the city's traffic engineer through the construction management plan. I believe that covers everything that we discussed.
Any questions? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Your second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Do we have a timeline for, the most important thing is how that this land property is going to be demolished? Do we have a timeline? Now we know we wait for, for approval. Is there more we can say? If you could give me some communications so I can give a heads up to the employees or if you could fly and drop them like, hey, day's a day. Some people are, you know, kids in a boat, like it's a familiar.
We should go ahead and get, how do you, please ignore it, because we've been a long way to get it up.
Do you tell these things to shut off?
Yeah. We got a lot of little screen.
Thirty days, sixty days?
I'd say probably for fifty days.
Fifty minutes. Okay. Next meeting.
Margaret? The next, um, item is the public hearing, the 60 Cleverly Court Site Plan Special Permit Planning Board Case Number 2016-4. In accordance with the provisions of Master and the Law's Chapels 48, Section 11, Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June 8th, um, at, um, on or after, um, 7:00 p.m. in the first floor boards and commissions room, Quincy City Vault, 1305 Hay Park Street, on the application of 60 Cleverly Court LLC, Joseph Taylor Manager, 147 Field Street, Quincy, Mass. 02170 for a site plan review under Quincy zoning ordinance Title 17, Section 9.5.1, site plan review, and special permit under Section 5.1.17, parking waiver. The applicant proposes to construct a new four-unit, three-story building containing 6,074 square feet of living area plus garage. The proposed development site contains 10,847 square feet of land and is located at 60 Cleverly Court. The land is within the Residence B zoning district and is shown in assessment plan 2067A Life 22. Counsel.
Good evening, Chairman. For the record, Christopher Harrington, my law office is at 21 McGrath Highway and I represent Joe Taylor, who's the developer of this project. Uh, for your information, Mr. Chairman and board members, this project, uh, was presented to the zoning board approximately two months ago and it was approved. So all of the dimension relief required for this project, uh, the building setbacks, for example, uh, have been approved by the zoning board already. This is a relatively small project. It's a corner lot on Cleverly Court, uh, down near the shipyard in South Quincy. Uh, it is a four-unit development. This project is designed, um, it's, it uses a mansard roof design, as you can see from the exterior elevations, to, um, to bring down the scale of the building and the room and make the building fit well with the other residential structures that are located in this neighborhood. Uh, a lot of these townhouses that are being designed today have a garage on the first floor, living space on the second, third floor, and then you have, um, a pitched, high-pitched gable roof above the third level, which makes the building, uh, appear to be a four-story building, four stories in height. Uh, this is designed to make it, uh, appear much smaller and blend in with the other, the other buildings in the area. Uh, with me this evening is Jim Burke. Uh, he's our civil engineer and he designed, uh, the site, the parking layout, as well as the drainage, uh, for this project. I'd like to introduce him to have him explain how the site was designed, uh, the drainage system, the proper. Thank you.
Uh, good evening. My name is Jim Burke, I'm with, uh, Sal Burton Associates, Development Office of Quincy, Mass. And, uh, we've, uh, been working on this project for a bit. Um, 10,792 square foot lot, a single-family house, uh, sits on, it's a small, uh, tunnel of mislocation. It's got a couple of curb cuts, uh, one off of, uh, Raycroft and another one off of Cleverly Court. Um, and, uh, you know, fairly, you know, larger than such a, a, a small house serviced by typical utilities. Go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt you, but just long clear because they're not marked in the package. Is this the house that's getting demolished?
Yes, that looks like it.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, so, uh, when it gets demolished, we'll be doing some construction management, uh, taking, you know, some of our own control and, uh, and the like, uh, to manage the construction impacts during, uh, that period of time. Uh, what we're proposing is about a, uh, 3,300 square foot roof, I should say, but an L-shaped, uh, four-unit building with a five-space parking lot and, uh, and it'll have four additional spaces, uh, uh, drive spaces, uh, for a total of nine to 14 units. Um, upgrading all, uh, all service utilities. As far as stormwater was concerned, uh, we did some soil testing out there, found some very good gravel, uh, sandy gravel, uh, did not find groundwater and, uh, proposed a, a six, uh, uh, structure, six-foot diameter leach pits, uh, to handle the, the, all storm events, uh, up to 100 years long. And, uh, we've answered, we revised the plans since, uh, the original submission based on a peer review letter from StanTech and, uh, a peer review letter from, uh, the Engineering Department. We got a response back from Engineering today that four other comments, the plans I actually see, we got it up here, have those revisions on these plans. It was a, a sore manhole inclusion, mislocation, moving the, uh, the valves for the water services onto the sidewalk and, uh, well, and the other one was, uh, actually a benefit of the client also, but, uh, the sidewalk in, along, uh, Cleverly Court was in good condition, so they didn't require us to, uh, rebuild it. Uh, have any questions? I certainly would like to answer.
Any questions in the board?
I have some questions about the one taken plan, was that getting ahead of us?
Uh, yeah, just, we'll get to that in just a minute. Um, this, uh, the application that we filed was a site plan review as well as a parking special permit. This project, um, doesn't need the parking special permit, only requires a site plan review. The, uh, and I'll explain why. The, we've already gone to the zoning board, which approved the variances. This project is a corner lot and the paving ordinance and the zoning ordinance says that a driveway can't be wider than 20 feet within a front yard setback. So this parking area is clearly wider than 20 feet here and also here because of, because of the two front yards on the property. Uh, the zoning board gave us a variance from that section of the zoning ordinance and so, uh, we don't need the parking special permit from this board, uh, only site plan review. These are the, uh, obviously the exterior elevations of what the building will look like, uh, when it's complete and the floor plans are typical of most of the, um, townhouses that are being proposed in the city today. Two cars on the first floor, uh, so the whole first floor is garage and then the living space is on the second and third floor. Three of the units are two bedrooms. The one corner unit here is a three-bedroom, it's a much larger unit because it takes up the additional space of where the L shape is, which, uh, connects the buildings to each other. And so in the, in your application package, photographs of, of the property as well as the neighborhood, uh, the first two photographs in that site are just a view up and down Cleverly Court in each direction from the property. The next two photographs are the house that's been toned down, the small white house on the corner. And then the next two pages of photographs are, are other residential structures that are very close to the subject property. Uh, house directly up the street, Ray House on the corner, Raycroft in Cleverly, which is right across the street, and then, uh, multi-family, uh, rental property is a small apartment building as well as, uh, three families that are up the street from the property on the other side of Cleverly Court. Um, as far as the, uh, the landscaping, this, uh, the landscaping plan, um, the, you know, the landscaping plan that we submitted, um, calls out, uh, all the different plants that are going to be, uh, planted on the site as well as the sizes of those plants, uh, at the time of their planting and when they're moved. If you have another question, I hope the landscaping plan will have an answer.
Just kind of picture, um, how it's going to look coming down the street. I, I spent a lot of time over at Cleverly Court at those soccer fields, um, and so, uh, I want to be protective of the aesthetics of the neighborhood. That corner, so you're coming up Cleverly Court, towards Washington Street, you see that corner, looking down on it, I see a number of what looks like are going to be big trees. Are there going to be, you know, maple trees on the corner? Is it going to, uh, uh, block a good amount of the house if you're looking left at it or?
Yes, the, the soccer fields would be, would be down here.
Yep.
And so the lands, the building was, was pushed back against this lot line and this lot line in order to create as much off-street parking as possible so the building wouldn't impact Cleverly Court. This, um, this site has, actually has, I think, 13 parking spaces, which is way more than the minimum required, uh, for four dwelling units. So there's, there's, uh, eight spaces inside the four units as well as the surface spaces that are outside. And the landscaping is designed to be heavy on Cleverly Court in the corner of Raycroft in order to create a screen and blunt the view of the building from, from Cleverly Court.
Yeah, and that was the point I was making because, I don't know if the rest of the board remembers, but we approved a project directly across the street. That's happening now. It's huge. Um, I don't know if anybody's been down there, uh, but, you know, just thinking about the direction that the neighborhood is going and wanting to make sure that, uh, going and driving up the street still has that sort of, uh, residential feel and so.
Yes.
I'm happy with that landscaping plan. Thank you for walking me through it.
Come on. Any other questions in the board? Chair Review?
Yeah.
Margaret?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for the record, Margaret Hartley from StanTech, former developer of the college. And, uh, we did the peer review. We started on this May 4th, the fire department. We need to get this in order. You okay? Uh, we, uh, submitted a review letter on May 25th to the fire department. We had 20 comments in total. Uh, as pointed out, the first thing that strikes you when you look at the site is how compact and tight the site is. Um, so we're concerned about the, our primary concern, as I mentioned to Margaret, um, that was, was the stormwater system that's on site. Uh, most of our comments have been addressed through a letter that we received, I guess a day or two ago. We sent the second letter up to your board today. In our letter, basically knocks down the 20 items saying, but most of them have been addressed, we'll itemize and talk about them very briefly. But the net, net of this is that we still have some lingering concerns that need to be addressed for your consideration. First is the stormwater system. It's designed presently to be two feet lower than would be permitted by stormwater policy without full knowledge of groundwater level. The groundwater level hasn't really been determined, okay? They did a test pit, didn't encounter any groundwater. So they were down, um, 13 feet, didn't encounter any groundwater. So they said, okay, well, we'll put the system down to the bottom of 15 feet, but you need to be two feet from groundwater according to the master water policy. So we feel pretty, uh, positive that they need to be doing a deeper test pit. They had said they just didn't have a deep enough machine and the machine couldn't reach deep enough to do the test pit. So our saying is, well, let's go out and do another. That's our recommendation. Go out and do another test pit, determine actual groundwater and finalize the design. If you were to make that a condition of approval, we think that would be possibly risky because the site's so tight, so packed. If they have to redesign that system, make it shallow, they'd have to make it broader, longer, it would take up more site area. We're not sure it would fit. So we think that's a very important condition that they address prior to your approval on the stormwater policy. Uh, there were some other things that we noticed. One is they, they corrected the turning movements, uh, clarified how it's going to be, kind of parkwise flow. It's basically getting it out here, but one way out this way. Of course, uh, Raycroft is one way, actually, no. We, uh, in our letter today suggested that they provide turning movement plan to the board and for the satisfaction of the fire department, that they can get their emergency vehicles in and out safely. It's a simple thing, not difficult to do, but they should provide that and get that locked in now before you get into your rules.
locked in now before you get into your rules. The other thing was, a couple of minor things. They did specify different types of pipe class and strength to make sure they don't collapse and so on. There was one pipe material, they didn't specify the type of class or the strength of the pipe, it's probably the same pipe they should. And for the underground structures, they don't specify the strength for how much traffic load it can take. Normally an engineer should do that. We're saying, get that right, put it in the plan. There's some odds and ends, housekeeping things that they can fix pretty quickly in the plan, so those revisions are pretty short-lived. But it's that deeper test pit, getting that information, locking in your design, and then we think it's okay, if that's the case, all right? As I said, oh, there's one other thing. Fire flow tests. They haven't been done. Normally, we think it's a good idea to do them before you approve a plan. As we thought about it, we talked to Margaret about this, if you were to make that a condition of approval, it would be workable. They'd have to get fire flow tests done before getting a building, for example, if it's not adequate. Well, there's nothing really on site that has to change radically. They might have to put in, worst case, put in a booster pump or something, or maybe replace a water line. But it wouldn't affect site layout, it wouldn't affect those types of things. It would be something that could work out with the water department and the fire department at that time. So we agreed that was, it's still in our, in our letter, but it's your call on that one. It's a form of policy decision, obviously, it's a call everything, but those are our recommendations, Mr. Chairman. Any questions, Mr. Woodman?
I do have one question. It may be best to direct to the applicant. What is, what's the height of the new structure as compared to the apartment building that gives a couple of properties down the street, that big brick one?
Brick apartment building?
Yeah. Are they about the same height? Is this property a little bit lower?
Probably about the same. The brick apartment building is two and a half stories, there's a half-story that's, the basement level of this building is occupied, there's windows in it.
Yeah.
And it sticks up above, seems to be above four to five feet with two stories up above. So this building's probably 25 feet tall with a flat roof.
And would it be fair to say, Councilor, that the properties that cross the street are about that same, same size?
Our property's 33 feet high, and the two and three family houses, the rental properties on the other side are full three-story structures, so those houses are probably at least 35 feet tall, maybe a little bit more.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions?
One quick question. Is there a snow storage, snow removal plan?
Yeah, the snow storage areas are going to be on the edge of the parking lot here as well as here. Mr. Chairman, that was one of the comments they had, they did submit, in our response to our letter, they provided a plan for that.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody who would like to speak, just ask to identify yourself. And there are sheets open, the window casing for people who don't want to speak but want to be recorded. Anyone like to speak, either in favor or in opposition to this? Second time anyone wants to speak, either, either, either direction, okay? Third and last time, anyone wants to speak in favor and make a motion to close the public hearing? A motion to close?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I just could, sorry. We feel there are still some issues on this project that have to be resolved. We request that we keep this open just to the next meeting. A couple of questions came up from the traffic engineer today that she has not been able to address yet, as well as fire department, we haven't received their comments yet. We'd like to get those from them. There were just a couple of items, one of them was the width of the garage doors. Chris, do you know the width of the garage doors? And we were kind of unable to determine. Also, the maneuverability of that kitty-cornered garage and how that's going to work on the site? That was Deb called me today, Deb from the traffic department here, she called me today and just had a question about that, the maneuverability of the...
The standard units, the doors are 16 feet wide, which is a standard width door for a two-car garage for residential use.
Okay, here's 16, we weren't sure whether they were 16.
This door is one car wide.
Okay, so it's just one car?
Which means, there's enough room there probably to park six cars, but...
Is the whole bottom floor open?
Yeah.
Okay.
So these, this year, the cars will enter and leave one at a time.
It wasn't a huge concern even if each unit had one car, because they do have additional parking on the site to equal what's necessary, two cars per unit. We just weren't sure what the dimensions were. There were also questions with the maneuverability of that, of cars in and out of that kitty-cornered site. Maybe you could provide a turning analysis over the next few weeks, we can get that buttoned up to it. So we do ask that we keep it open until the next meeting when there should be a decision ready, draft it for the board at least, with all of final recommendations.
Good. I recommend, I have recommendations from StanTech.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, that, the issue of the stormwater system is important also to the city's engineering department, DPW, because they're going to need to do that for the stormwater permit.
All right, so a motion to put this to a meeting on July 13th. I'll vote for table.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, the next slide is a public hearing, 852 Holliston Street and 11, 15 Forest Avenue modification to the Quinsey subdivision, plenty go to case 2015-subdivision-02. In accordance with provisions of National Law Chapter 41, Section 81 and Rules and Regulations for a definitive subdivision approval adopted by the planning board in the city of Quinsey dated September 1, 2007, the Quinsey Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June 8, 9:03. In the first floor board's commission room in Quinsey City Hall, 1305 Hainhart Street, on the application of Michael Salamondo, here at Edgerjay Fleming Esquire 85 Place Street, Quinsey 02170. Modify the planning board's previously approved definitive subdivision plan to extend Holliston Street and Forest Avenue for three single-family house lots on vacant lots at 52 Holliston Street and 118 Forest Avenue. The applicant is now seeking approval to provide for the further extension of Holliston Street to create one additional house lot at 62 Holliston Street. The applicant is requesting certain waivers from compliance with the Planning Board's Rules and Regulations for Subdivision. The applicant is also proposing grading and drainage modifications. Property contains approximately 2,900 plus minus square feet and is located in the Residence Aid zoning district and is shown as explained 41 on Street 11. Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a member of the board, for the record, my name is Edward Fleming, I'm here on behalf of Michael Salamondo. Mike is here with me tonight, as well as Darren Grady from Grady Consulting. Just a little history on this. Back in March, you actually approved the extension of Holliston Street for the creation of three new single-family house lots identified here as lots one, two, and three, Forest Avenue dead ends presently. And we went through a couple of different hearings as well as neighborhood meetings with the neighbors to deal and try to address some of the concerns that they raised about some waiver requests that were being made, and also just to further explain the plan for them. After we went through those public hearings, this board, on March 9th, approved the extension of Holliston Street for the creation of those three house lots. One of the main issues of concern that was discussed by the neighbors during those hearings, you may remember, is what is going to happen with the rest of the land, all of which is actually owned by the Joyce family, which is identified here as Lot 4, and also this area of Holliston Street. And because that was an issue of concern with the neighbors, and Mr. Salamondo had had a number of discussions with the Joyce family during the permitting of the initial three lots, Mr. Salamondo continued that discussion with the Joyce's, and he was able to come to an agreement for the acquisition of the remaining land. Mr. Salamondo, on his own, actually called for a neighborhood meeting after reaching out to Counselor Calmucci, and had a great neighborhood meeting where I know the folks that are here tonight, a number of neighbors in the community came to the meeting, and Mr. Salamondo discussed the possibility of extending Holliston Street just a little further for the purposes of creating only one additional house lot on the 32,000 square feet that remains as part of this Holliston Street subdivision. And during that discussion, and the folks here, the neighbors that are here can talk about it, I think there was some relief on the part of many of the neighbors that this would, if this was going to be extended any further, that it would only be extended for one additional house lot. So when reaching out to the planning department, we asked whether or not we could simply come back before you on a request to modify the initial approval that was issued by this board to further extend Holliston Street as is shown in the plan, and I'll let Mr. Grady go through it in a little bit more detail, for the purposes of creating that one additional house lot. So that's the purpose of why we're here today. It's a little bit of an unusual request, but we felt, we felt that because the matter was still outstanding and that you hadn't actually signed the decision on the definitive subdivision plan, that it was, that we could continue and keep the matter open and simply come in on a request for a modification. So that's what brings us here before you tonight. So Darren, if you want to just kind of walk the board through the proposed extension.
Sure. Briefly showing you what's... My name is Darren Grady, I'm with Grady Consulting. And to briefly go through the changes of the previous available to this one, obviously the additional support lot shown here, we've... The lot seats got bigger. Before, we had 85-foot frontages, and right now, we have 100-foot frontages on each one. So we increased the size of Lot 2 and Lot 3. We added a turnaround here, and we've also submitted that to the fire department with the turning analysis. We did get a letter back saying that they agreed with that turning analysis. They did ask for one modification, and it was in the location of the hydrant that's shown at the top of the building. This hydrant here, they've asked to then move down the hill to allow for that turning radius, to give them more room for that turning radius. As far as other changes, the drainage system remains in the same location, but it's smaller. Our previous drainage analysis was designed for six house lots, which included the development of the Joyce lots.
Darren, can I interrupt? You changed the stormwater system from the previous?
Correct.
You know what, I have to apologize, we, I don't think we caught that, because we were told that that system was designed larger than necessary and that it would accommodate this change. We did not have it reviewed by our peer review for stormwater.
Okay.
That system, the new redesigned system. Yeah, I know, I'm sorry, I kind of stopped in your tracks here.
The original system, if we can explain, was actually designed so that there would be a full extension of Holliston, so that this would be created into six additional, or three additional lots. And so because the roadway was only extended an additional, what, 20 feet to that, a 30 feet?
30 feet, yeah.
With the turnaround as opposed to the cul-de-sac or any other plan, we, I think the, the larger system wasn't needed at that point. But I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, you know, and I think Chen, our city engineer, just looked at it thinking nothing had changed on the system and didn't recommend peer review. So I think I'd really be more comfortable if we could just get the peer reviewer to take another look at it before we issue the final approval. I mean, I, it's up to the board if you feel it's adequate, but I just feel that we might have missed something here. Not that the system isn't going to be adequate, but...
Would it be possible to make that a condition of the approval? The only reason for that is Mr. Salamondo's under an obligation of the agreement to close.
Yeah, yeah, I believe we can.
Is there a percentage of change that you could speak to?
Sure, it's actually two-thirds, just as far as what houses are, too. This is the previous analysis, which we had, six house lots going into a drainage system with three rows of underground chambers. It's been decreased to two rows of underground chambers. Reason for the decrease is we aren't disturbing as much planning here, we're able to keep this natural. And the pavement isn't increased by a whole lot over what was shown here.
You've diminished by one-third?
Yes.
The size of the stormwater treatment area, except...
Correct.
And everything's proportional?
Yes.
No, just because, you know, decreasing the lots by a count, or is that, to me, doesn't mean anything as long as the, the six lots are different sizes, you know, everything's proportional in your deduction?
Correct.
Yeah, of course. So if we can go back to the proposed large Lot 4, which I believe is 32,000 square feet or something like that?
Yeah, that's the remaining land area that's part of the Joyce site. So that entire land area, it won't be disturbed, it's part of the lot, but it will be, it will be the remaining land that will be part of the development.
Right, and so Holliston Street is, I'm just trying to picture the final project and where, where this is going. So where Holliston Street is shown on that plan, that's always taped all the way down? It's not, it's going to stop at the turnaround?
Only to this section here, right, where the turnaround, the hammerhead turnaround is?
Yep.
The topography actually changes dramatically here?
That's what I remember.
Where it goes up dramatically. And there was an analysis done that I think Mr. Salamondo presented to the neighbors, where if a cul-de-sac was done here, this, this area would have to be dramatically disturbed, and hence why the proposal was made for a hammerhead turnaround and getting approval from the, from the fire department. So no, it'll only be improved to this, to this extent.
And then north of Holliston Street, in that land developable, the, those three...
Over here, in this area here?
Yes.
No, that's Cuttingham Park.
Okay.
That's the Quinsey Cuttingham Park site, so that, that goes into Cuttingham Park and Milton.
Yep.
That's...
And so the plan for Lot 4, just so I'm clear, is a single-family residence?
One single-family house lot. To be built really as far, closest to Holliston Street as possible, so that it has very little disturbance on folks on Turning Mill, and I believe Mr. Salamondo spoke with folks on Turning Mill that he would do so, and locate the house in that fashion.
Okay, very helpful. And as I recall, we've had a number of meetings on this project, and there's always been large neighborhood turnout, so I take the lack of neighborhood turnout and, you know, I'll be interested to hear what people who have it in have to say, but I take the lack of neighborhood turnout to speak to what you said earlier, well, it's a positive reaction.
Any other questions, Mr. Woodman?
One quick, one quick question. I was thinking about the topography issue, too. I remember that, that when we discussed this in the previous meetings, that, you know, it would be very hard to develop as you continue down Holliston. So the question is, is, so this parcel here is, I mean, are there challenges because of the topography? I was curious.
There's challenges in every lot.
Yeah, and then you'll...
My name is Mike Salamondo. And I really like that lot because of the challenges. Yeah, there are some challenges, and...
Including blasting challenges, or?
No, I'm going to try, we've, I've already done test holes all up and down the center of the street, all the way, all the way up to the back of the lot, and I've done test holes, and I did it for the Joyce's as well, and I test-holed all the way up there. And I'm familiar with it because I had done Turning Mill land before, years ago, and I actually built my own home across the street there. But several of the homes that are connected on the Turning Mill side are also pinned to the ledge, and that's what the Simeoni brothers did. And so I'm familiar with this area. did. And so I'm familiar with this area, and I, I've got, I've got a really, a very cool design, to put it that way.
It's kind of built in.
But it's different. It's going to, it's going to be stout into the, into the side of the hill. It's going to be a special home. Not for everybody, but it's going to be exciting. Just because I like the challenge. You're right, it is challenging.
Thank you.
To do it right. And this sounds interesting.
And that's, and I hear the neighbors, and, and Mr. Salamondo indicated and assured the neighbors that there would be no further development. So that, that, that's understood, that that would be part of any kind of decision to this board, that no, no further development.
I've got a letter into Cunningham Park right now that I sent, that, you know, seeing if we could, you know, with their agreement, that we abandon the rest, abandon the rest of the way, and, you know, with the road we have. What I'd like to do is pull the last house that we have, is far away from the, the, convince they'll have to have this setback. And I want to get this house away from this house as far as I can. So I, I think if we have the way abandoned, I could, I could do just, you know, put the line down the center of the road if they agree and we agree, and close the road off. And that way I can move this, you know, to maybe the, the side of the road and get it further away from these houses. I mean, that would be, that would, that's my intent anyway, if they go along with it. And I think they will, because they, they don't want to see it more developed.
Darren, my question on this sheet that you're showing us, is that Lot 4 smaller than what we're seeing on our sheet? Is it divided down the middle?
This is the tree line. This is where...
It's a tree line?
Yes.
Okay. From here, I couldn't tell whether you're trying to divide that. So Lot 4 is going to remain this huge lot? It's just going to be that huge lot? You're not anticipating making it smaller or combining this?
No, it'll be a substantial home, but it, because it has to be, but it, but it'll, no, that's...
Just on clear then, that tree line is potentially temporary. Somebody could clear all the way back to the property line on the, on the western side.
Well, this is going to impact here.
Right.
And this is...
And then the tree line breaks smack in the middle, so that...
Right, the tree line's just a tree line. I mean, I guess they can, if they want to. I don't think it's really necessary. I mean, unless they want to put tennis courts back there, but I, I think a relative, this is probably as big as where I'm, that's where I'm going to take it to.
Had, had you considered maybe cutting that off and maybe, you know, donating or using it, donating it to Cunningham Park, as I was saying?
Well, I was going to say, if I, if my second, you read my mind, if, if they say no on this, I say, well, look, I'll give you a piece of this, why don't you give me a piece, you know, I, I would take a piece. I want to get this house away from here as much as I can. I mean, it's funny, you get these little lots and you get like, you know, like 10,000, I'm, I'm kind of going the opposite way. You get 10,000 square foot lot, you get 18 units on it. Over here, we get 32, I'm putting one, I guess I'm a little backwards.
I, I think once the lot's created and after the fact, when you go for building, there may be a possibility for variance for the, to park the site certain use, you know, to get closer to the...
Right.
What's laid out.
Right, and in the consideration of the neighbors as well, I think that would be a little favorable on that.
I have a question with staff. I, I've seen a letter from the fire department. Can we solicit, on this, from the other departments?
We did, yes. And as I said, engineering looked at it, changing the drainage system had not changed from the previous one, and they are comfortable with it. We don't have any comments. Those are the only departments that responded. We got the fire department comment today, that they're, they're satisfied with the air.
I haven't looked at Mass. Civil Law Chapter 41 in quite a while, but it used to talk about the recommendation from the health.
Health, yes. I think we did get help, didn't we?
It was initially a health department.
Yeah, health had seen this originally and was satisfied with it.
Including modification?
Yeah, I don't think she sent anything back on it.
Do you think so?
Yeah. And I, I, I'm certain it's just giving her a nudge and making sure she gets that back to us. We have comments from the previous subdivision plan. I'll contact her tomorrow and get that.
Okay, it is a public hearing. Your people have waited so.
Just get to observe.
Anybody wish to speak in favor or in opposition? All be recorded.
We had to just observe.
Okay.
We did a neighborhood meeting, and with a lot of snaps, I will add. And there was general agreement upon this plan.
All right, can a motion to close the public hearing be approved? All those in favor?
Aye.
I think we need to pursue the issue that you raised. And I'd also like to see a letter from the health department. I don't know what anybody else is feeling. It's like, what are we, what are we being positioned to do something on the July 13th?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll have, we can have everything ready by then.
A motion to continue this to the July 13th meeting. So, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have one other item, business.
Thank you.
Got a business item?
I have an approval.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I have a motion to approve the...
Don't think they're ready.
Yeah, I didn't have a seat.
They weren't, they're not quite ready.
All right. The last item on the business?
Yes. The last item is regarding easements with Marina Bay Boardwalk residences at Marina Bay. In 2013, the planning board approved the boardwalk residences at Marina Bay through special permit. As part of, as part of that special permit, the applicant was required to grant certain easements to the city for public access around the boardwalk and in front of the building, as well as for certain parking areas. The item on this agenda was moved from another agenda that, so we had sent you this information in the previous packet, and I apologize, I don't have the, the information, the documents available for you tonight, but the city solicitors have read through it, the easement information, and are satisfied, and they do recommend approval of it. It's, it's simply closing the loop on that special permit. The applicants were required to grant these easements, and now the planning board has to just make a recommendation to city council, that city council accepts them. Because it's a, it's, city council actually has to pay a dollar for them or something. So anything like that has to go through city council rather than the planning board. So I've drafted a motion, Rich, if, if I can make this. The motion to send a recommendation to the city council that they accept the public access easement as required by the planning board decision, planning board case 2012-4, boardwalk residences at Marina Bay dated May 15, 2013.
So moved. So second?
Second.
Second. If that's one of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, someone?
At first, I'd like to officially wish the planning board chairman a happy, happy birthday.
I'm still counting, Dan.
Thank him, thank him for spending it with us this evening. And, and with that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Next meeting is July 13th, Dan. Thank you all.
Happy Flag Day.
Nine twenty-nine.